Call this meeting to order. I'd like to, can I get a motion to go into executive session with a discussion of legal opinion regarding food service RFP, pursuant to CGS 1-225F, 1-210B, and 1-206E?
Sold.
I have a person second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, we are in executive session. I have a motion to come out of executive session, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstention, the motion carries, we are out of executive session. Okay, so we will continue with the discussion and possible action regarding how to proceed with the food service program. And I guess that, I don't know, definitely.
Well, just for review because it's only fair to the public. Sure. Where we stand, as the reviewer, as Ms. Winters reviewed the bid with the state, it was determined that the definition for calculating price was flawed by in the bid process, resulting in incorrect calculation of price for the companies. So therefore, the town attorney believes that there is a discussion the board has to have as to whether or not they would like to rebid the process all over again for outsourcing.
Yes, Karen.
If you could please provide a timeline as to what that rebidding process would look like if the board so chooses to engage in that.
Ms. Winters has prepared that. So return to the second.
Yeah, return to the second page. The timeline is a draft revised RFP was sent to the state today. State indicated it could be approved on Friday. The notice would be posted in the newspaper, May 27th. The official date of the RFP posting is based on when the newspaper publishes the bid notice, so that would be May 29th. All of the other dates are listed with a bid opening on June 29th. The final contract would be executed and sent to the state on July 13th.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, just for the purposes of people who have not been through this, like ourselves, who have been through this whole process at this time. When we get to, on your date here, you have executed the state, from what I understood, the state executed the state on July 15th. First of all, where does the board take action? I don't see that on your timeline. Why? Well, no, it's supposed to be on this timeline. It doesn't, I don't know where the board.
It's not listed, it would be July prior to the execution.
Okay, but then where does the state department, the state department, you're saying that they would get the draft contract to the state, and you're saying that two days later they're going to execute it?
Yes, a draft was revised in conjunction with the purchasing department and sent to them later this afternoon. We spoke with the state department, they said that they could review it and get back to us in two days, which would be Friday.
No, you're in the wrong month. I'm in July, I'm not in May anymore. So the thing is that July 13th, you have a draft contract going to the state department of education. And then you have July 15th, the state department saying they're going to execute, they're going to review the contract, there's going to be no redlining, there's going to be none of those things that we had heard about previously from you. There's going to be none of that, so it's only going to take two days to execute the contract.
We sent the timeline and the state in writing to confirm the timeline.
Do we have that in writing?
We do, yes.
Is that available?
I don't have it with me, but I certainly could provide it.
I want to see that.
Yeah, and the purchasing actually received clarification that they could move it up one day. So what they confirmed was one day later, then purchasing asked me to amend it to make it one day sooner.
We're in this process where the board of ed be looking at this and reviewing it and doing approvals. After the 15th?
The next one is around the accident.
Yeah, no, it have to be, that's what I'm asking, does the board give their, I guess, what am I looking for, at least their contingent approval, I don't know if that's the right adjective, and then it goes to the state to go forward? Does, yeah, do we do a contingent approval and then it goes to the state for final approval? And then we come back and then actually, you know, accept it? What are the steps there?
The contract is basically the RFP with the denoms and then anything else that's changed. Once it's reviewed by legal, it would be.
So where's that?
It's not listed, I mentioned that earlier. So that would be based on the superintendent designate, if the board provides the authority or if the board votes on it.
There's no time built in. What the answer to, the answer to the question is that Linda.
So I still didn't get the answer to my question.
Well, I'm going to answer it for you because it makes more sense to me at this point. So July 1st through the 13th, she has on here that it's going to be reviewed by legal. So basically, there's no timeline built in for the board. So this idea that it's going to be executed by the 15th is erroneous, in my mind. Because you have July 13th, it's going to be at the town for that time. The town attorney has to look at it.
So they have the 13 days.
So basically, what we would have, we would have, I'm assuming, unless this is, Linda, you can answer this, are you assuming between July 1st and July 13th that the board also reviews and approves the contract at that point? It doesn't say that, so I don't want to put words.
I would have to check with purchasing. They verified that the legal department could review any changes.
And what I understood from this process, if the board had to have gone successfully in their timeline, then the board, once the town, and Cindy, you were part of those discussions, once the town attorney had approved the contract, the board would then actually vote on that approved contract?
If it's required. In the documentation from the state, it's either the superintendent or the board of ed if it requires.
We agreed that the board was going to do that. Now, the superintendent wasn't assigned on his own in this case. The board decision online.
So I'm still not clear about, just forget dates, the steps that take place. I understand that, but all I want to know is once the legal department gives their review and signs off on, you know, potentially, signs off on whatever, then does it go to the board of ed to do a contingent approval and then it goes to the state? And then it comes back for final approval for the board of ed? That's what I, I still haven't got my notes around that.
The state has it listed that after the contract is executed, which would be July 15th, and the board of ed would approve the final.
Okay, but do we do, is there a step where the board, it seems to me that the board, the state would want to know that the board at least, in theory, is in support of this.
Right, that would be after June 30th, which is when the proposals would be evaluated.
Wouldn't we first want to see legal, I, yeah, I'm trying to get appeal for this. So legal, you want legal to, I mean, I'm not going to give a contingent potential approval on something if legal hasn't looked at it. So wouldn't that point after July 13th, once the legal's done? I'll get you guys, I'm sorry. July 13th, I feel like we're missing like two steps.
Last time we gave, if you remember, we looked at the bid, whatever was presented to us, if you remember. And then we gave Sal the permission to negotiate the actual contract.
Right.
Is that, would that still be done?
Yeah, that's missing also. Yes, that would be.
So what you're saying, I'm thinking Roxanne, that after the legal department reviews it?
Yeah.
We review it, and then at that point, we give Sal the right to negotiate?
No. After June 30th, see, there's, there's. In the spirit of trying to expedite the process, we run the risk of also, you know, spitting our nose to save our face. So the process you have is June 30th it closes, okay? We haven't even built in.
Actually, June 29th.
29th. So we haven't even built in if there's going to be a committee, Linda. When is the committee going to be evaluating the bid?
According to the RFP document, after review and evaluation of proposals.
But you have one day. You have a proposal deadline on the 29th, and then the next day on the 30th. You're going to have review evaluation of proposals by a committee in one day?
It's possible, yes, it could be done.
Okay, what's possible realistic, I guess, two different things. And then in addition to that.
This is just a draft timeline, subject to revision.
I know, yeah. So the thing is that we have the evaluation of proposals, then based on that, one of those would go to the board of education to explain, and then he would be giving me permission to enter to contract negotiation. So what we have is before it goes to the town.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So to me, I would add an extra three weeks, minimum. And I'm just randomly picking a number, three weeks, but knowing it's summertime, you know, availability of people and all that, but I mean, I think.
Between 6:30 and 7:13, you're talking around.
Between June 29th, June 30th, yes, Mike, between June 30th and July 15th, I think that's going to be more like August 1st at a minimum, if not even August 10th. I said three weeks, I build in two to three weeks, because it's got to balance back and forth between various entities, if you will, and not to mention a committee. So I think you have to build in at least another two to three weeks. Okay, I'm sorry.
Right, my question.
Okay, great. So then I'll to Jay, and then I've got Karen. You all set mic outside in a minute? So Jay and then Karen, go ahead.
How's that?
Yep, that's you.
In the original process, what was the time period between the date of, between the proposal deadline date and the executed contract date? How many, how much time? Here is the difference between June 29th and July 15th. So what's that, two weeks?
Proposal deadline was April 4th and board of ed approval April 25th.
So how many, how many weeks was that?
April 25th, so that was 21 days, three weeks, there's my three weeks.
Oh, this one's two weeks.
It was the 4th, the 4th to the 25th. No, she said April 4th.
No.
I'm looking at the last document, board of ed approval applicable was April 25th.
Yeah, but then the fully executed, the initial plan for full execution was to June.
Then the draft goes to the state, the state reviews it, once the state approves it, then you have the executed contract.
So can I ask, can I tell you a little?
Please.
So what should the last step in this process be? This was Linda's proposal, changes to that, based on what you know. Is executing contract the last step in this?
Two different versions.
That's what we had in our last.
What I understood it to be last week, when Linda shared it with us, was that the last step was that we would get it back from the state department and the board would approve the final contract.
Can I ask, in the original one, what was the time period, the number of weeks between the proposal deadline and the final act or step in the whole process? Or the original?
Proposal deadline was April 11th.
In the last step in the whole process?
The state was required to, the last step is to execute the contract, which is July 1st.
In the original contract?
Yes, that's correct.
What was the step before that one? The date of the step before that?
Draft contract to the state.
And what's the date of that?
That was May 23rd or.
So there were, there were five weeks between when it went to the state and.
Yes, these are dates that the state publishes, these are like the final or recommended dates. Yep, so it was draft contract, May 23rd, execute July 1st.
So if you took that same time span and you applied it to this, to the period of time after the proposal deadline, what date would that take us to?
That would extend it, if you had this same timeframe, it would extend it two months according to this. But the state indicated, because most of the contracts are executed by July 1st, that they could expedite it. That's why the timeline was taken.
So Alan, what is the feasibility of having a food service management company with a realistic timeline in place if the board so chose to go through this entire process, et cetera, being able to, maybe if the board chooses, be able to have this up and running for the beginning of school, or is it just not feasible at all?
I'm going to answer that question. The purchasing department told me that they checked and that companies could get set up within two weeks' notice, so it is feasible if everything was executed by the end of July. They said they would need about two weeks.
So the other question that I had raised earlier today was the question of summer responsibilities and all the work that needs to be done during the month of July while we're potentially waiting for a company to come on board, in additions to the federal reporting and purchasing and procurement of supplies. So do you have anything to share on that?
I do, I asked the interim director, and this is a color code to make it easier for people to differentiate.
Yes, I apologize for my question.
Well, I think in past house, did you say the purchasing department said that they need to be set up in two weeks?
Why would they?
How would they know?
Outside vendors, outside vendors indicated to Sal and Dale and the purchasing department that they could get set up to operate for the beginning of school with two weeks' notice. The last page of the yellow document was put together by the food service document, by the food service interim director, Mr. Alan Delcheck, and he provided this timeframe of the activities and the different, you know, things that have to be completed, the very last page of the yellow. It's called summer work, so these are the different things.
How can you be doing?
This is if you were staying.
Yeah, I don't actually see the department, but this was provided by the food service department by the interim director.
So the question, and I don't want to take it later, but that, the question that I had earlier today, and that's why I asked for this document to be developed, is that if we're looking, there are several activities that occur, and I guess, you know, staff that's here today is no better than I, that there are several activities that need to occur prior to entering into new school year that start immediately following school and go throughout the month of July, that need to be executed. We have contracts that need to be executed with Holy Trinity. I don't know who would be making the contract, because we don't know who we have. We also have bids that need to be prepared, go to purchasing, there needs to be, all the POs need to be awarded. You all, and so again, that's my concern, is that how would we go out to purchasing or go out to bid? We wouldn't, if we had an outside company, they would be doing the purchasing.
I really am not sure what I'm looking at in this.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can we start?
This is my cell phone. This is food services. This is what eats.
What is being done now?
This is.
Do you understand?
Correct. So we were going to run food services any given school year, any given school year in health service. These are the things that need to occur in order for us to be prepared for the first of the school year.
Gotcha.
So the fact is that if, the reason why I asked for this document is that if we're going out to bid and the bids don't come back until late July, then we are either putting, we're either behind the law or taking risks that we won't be prepared for the first of school.
Okay, I got it. I see, I know, I'm sorry. Okay, I understand now.
Because we have to plan for two different scenarios.
That's right.
So if that is the case, and we decide that we can't possibly throw those things in place, the overall alternative is to stay as we are.
Correct.
Incur a deficit of $350,000.
Projected.
Projected. And we, will we have to hire a director?
Somebody's going to be in service.
How do you hire a director for one year?
Or an interim.
Well, the thing is, I think that that discussion is a different time, because we still have, that's a personnel circumstance.
Oh, that's correct.
So I don't think we can always have conversations.
All right, I just, just need a little quickie next time.
I understand.
I guess I just feel like this timer is a little bit aggressive. I'm just a little bit concerned that, you know, with the transition and obviously with the yellow sheet, there seems to be a lot of things going on in the summer. If we were to move forward with, you know, rebidding, does that have to be for this year? Because I mean, this seems like this is a lengthy process and it seems a little bit confusing with the state. Is, how long is the bid like, or how long is it?
How long is the bid good for?
Yeah, how long it could be?
It's one year, every year.
That's not the question that's being asked again. The question that's being asked is if we were to go out to bid now, how long would the company hold the bid price?
Yes, thank you.
That's the question that's being asked, not how long the bid is good for. So you're answering the second question. The first question is, the most likely, again, we would have to get clarification with the state, the town does not usually have companies hold a bid longer than three months. So the thing is, because prices change, so you cannot, right now, you would not go out to bid now and expect a company to hold the bid for July 1st of 2017. You'd have to wait until later in the school year to do a big process in order, at that point, because you would, it would be imprudent to do it in the spring.
Yeah, I understand. I guess what I'm just concerned is I just don't want to rush this process. And then, like, I want to know what the likelihood of, it's eliminating these flaws from happening again, so that would, you know, waste, you know, committee members' time or, you know, everyone that's come out, you know, tonight, and obviously all of our time, so I just, I want to make sure I have the best knowledge to make a, you know, the decision that's better than anyone.
Well, as we saw in the first process, it took about three months from the beginning to the end, or it should have taken three months. So what I, what I would recommend is, again, Ms. Winters being responsible for this with purchasing and the town, is that we would start the process earlier, which it should have started in February. And now that we have a bid that we know where the flaws are in it, in terms of the flaws that were not clearly stated through the original development of the bid by business and purchasing with the flaw in the scoring criteria, that that would be rectified at that point, and we would start the process earlier, so that you would be looking at awarding a contract if that were the choice of the board next year, to award a contract not in June, but awarding it closer to the month of May, to start in July of the following year. So we want to move off the process. And then in terms of trying to avoid, repeat, you know, we want to definitely look at the criteria that was in question, which was the scoring, and making sure that was done properly. And then in terms of committee, making sure that we construct the committee the way that it needs to be constructed at that time. We may want to consider, and this is something, again, if the board chose to do this at a later date, consider hiring somebody to oversee the process from the outside to make sure we don't repeat the same mistake.
And then my, my last question is, you know, if we did not move forward with rebidding, how does this affect like program, I'm sure, obviously that's, you know.
Well, what it does is it puts on pause right now, the items, the three additional items that we're looking to put into the budget, which was their early literacy extended day for literacy and numeracy. It puts on hold the social worker at the alternative high school, and it puts on hold the help and all this curriculum resource teacher at this point. Obviously, we're still closing the year out, we do have a couple, or at least seven of them retired that just recently came in. There may be an opportunity to do some aspect of those things, but definitely not all.
Right. That's very disappointing. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, just to make sure I have a search. All right, so we bring online, it's two present.
I think we favored that.
We need to get this up. I mean, they don't match up, right? If we extend this deadline, I mean, we'll learn the kind of case, right?
Well, if anything, I've learned a lot about this process in these last few weeks. This thing has been learning what to do and not to do in the future, but I would, if we decide to rebid now or here from now, I want to make sure, because now I know a little bit more some of the particulars, that whatever committee decides, we have a committee to do this, that we would have, we can maybe have input, what things we are looking for as a board member.
Well, we did have input in all fairness, we did check the scoring, we did.
But that scoring, but maybe, I think now we, I know a little bit more about it than I did then we did, is what I'm trying to say. So maybe it'll be more accurate, maybe on our part maybe, or my part anyway, because I know a little bit more of what they're looking for and what we're looking at. Am I making any sense at all? I don't know.
Well, I like the notion, to piggyback on that, the notion of potentially having somebody oversee the process that frankly has gone through it successfully, that could guide us and, you know, avoid the pitfalls that apparently we hit. So that would be, I would like to see that in place.
I would too.
Personally, if that's the way we go, I think we want to avoid this again.
Yeah, what I'd recommend in that area is getting a list of, there were over 50 districts that bid this spring, so I, first of all, I asked the question, if Ms. Winters is still going to get bid for the, I'd like to know how many school districts out of the over 50 had to rebid and for what reasons. It should be public record, so that would help us better understand. Then I would like the state to make a recommendation of the top three, the things that they feel were the best put together, the most solid, and then I could reach out to those districts to see if we could have. The business manager from their district probably facilitated it to oversee our process.
Yeah.
May I find?
Yeah.
What's your opinion on the P at this point, on these documents?
My opinion, and I think that the three of us would concur, that we do not believe that it is realistic to think that in the best interest of students and also the people sitting in this audience, that I should be going out to bid again at this time. I do not think it's, I, while I'm disappointed, I'm very disappointed about the positions that we're not going to be able to allocate funding for, which also impacts students, right? I just think that the reluctance of not knowing, the uncertainty. We have a lot of question marks, this timeline is, is in my mind, and again, I just thought about 10 minutes before, before our meeting, Linda, give me a private copy, there are so many flaws in this, because it doesn't accurately reflect.
Not to mention this, that was.
That was just, I have to take those things into consideration.
Yes. I would just like to say that there was a lot of time and effort put in on the part of the committee.
Yep.
To.
Not on notice.
Exactly. Hours and hours and hours, volunteer time put in by students and parents and administrators, board members, I believe there was, yeah, a number of folks. And I think that that, you know, that should be recognized, because this was, you know, a thoughtful process, the bid process that we went through, and calling through a lot of information that was presented. And it's unfortunate that, you know, along the way, something went amiss on pricing in particular, so.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I also think the board took a lot, the whole board took a lot.
Exactly right.
Thinking that, every alternative and thinking of everybody's feelings, everything.
Right, right.
It was not easy.
No.
And also a bad square on the staff side.
It has, it's, exactly.
Waiting, waiting.
And again, unfortunately, they often, they're not usually sitting in these meetings, and they're not sitting at this table, but the students are disappointed.
The students too. Yeah, it's disappointing on every level. I, I, yeah. So I guess, any other questions, I guess, from the board, or comments from the board at this time? So, excuse me, let me read what, exactly, our, our agenda states, discussion and possible action regarding how to proceed with the food service program, so yes, Mike?
I think, well.
Please.
I think I make a motion that the board table going out to rebid at this time and to continue with the same.
I don't know if you want to use the word team.
You just said the same, but.
All right.
Can I ask one more question before you make a question?
Oh, we have a question.
Oh, okay, but can I ask my question and then?
Sure.
Is, and I'm just asking this, is. Is, is there any feasibility to possibly, looking to rebid with the, with the notion of institute, if that's the way we go, with a January 5th date of?
Say that now for January?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Or does it have to be tied to the start of the school year? I don't even know if that's an option.
Again, I think that one of the practicality of that, it's a year bid.
Right.
It's only a year.
Right.
So you're awarding a year, so now you run the risk that you're going to be going out to bid and not necessarily having somebody coming back in as your service company after the winter break.
Right.
Okay, and that, now obviously you don't want to do that. That's gotta be a. So, so the idea is that the year would start with the July 1st?
July 1st, June 30th.
Well, we couldn't do that anyway.
No, but the thing is that you would, the natural break.
Is that you have, and then the summer. But my point is, even if we went out to bid, that would not be, would not be retrospective to a July 1st. The best case scenario would be August 1st, so we missed that deadline anyway.
So you would have, there's a little bit more flexibility there, because you're, but the, the, the January is.
Yeah, not, no flexibility.
Well, I, I, as you said. We all agreed that it was limited flexibility and then discussing that with them there.
Just try to think as about several of it. That's all I was trying to do. I'm sorry. Tammy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just kind of, I had done a little research, obviously, on this back in January. And I had gotten a timeline from the state, so I would just recommend or maybe ask the board to consider using the state timeline and just updating that, because these are the recommended steps from the state. And they have, even if we change the dates, they have what the average district took for these areas.
So based on that, what I'm just curious, what, just, I don't need all the details, Tammy, but from beginning, just to the beginning date to the end date, how many months? How many, how many months did they give us?
Tell me you're.
I'm just curious what they, what they perceive as the total timeline that would be reasonable.
They send that to me June 21st.
Let's see.
Oh, well, I'm just.
But that was tied with a three-month process or?
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the state deems as the.
Benchmark, to back into it.
This is starting well before the beginning of February. It starts and it ends with an execution of approval by July 1st.
Which I have nothing of pressure, which is mandatory. So they use about five-month, I can't, oh, I can't start on that. About five-month process.
How many weeks?
Yeah, this is.
That's the way I read it, is that it starts, it, this started in about the beginning of February and ends July 1st with the signed copy to the state being there.
But in all fairness, that's probably making an assumption that the state is inundated because multiple communities are going out to.
And this was one of those years.
Right, right. So I could understand why they probably use a longer timeline, knowing that they could be dealing with how many communities. So I could appreciate that.
So if the decision, which there was, I believe, a motion to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, do you remember?
All right. I had to try to write it out for table. I'm just gonna say I made a motion that we continue with the cafeteria program passes. Perhaps for the next four years, should I say that? For this coming school year.
Yeah, I, I, yes, you would.
It's part of the, Carrie, can you say?
Can you add to the motion?
Yeah. Well, we got this.
Well, we haven't had one yet. Yeah, that's for sure. And you get amended.
I made a motion to continue using, to continue the present system of providing lunch program.
For the 2016, 2017.
School year.
School year.
I'll second that motion for the purposes of discussion. And now if you want to make a friendly amendment.
Oh, very friendly.
I would like to be very true friendly. For then in motion for it. My amendment would be to, after reviewing the numbers from the start of the upcoming school year, I'm rusty, I remember, so forgive me.
Just say it, just say it.
All right.
Go back to it.
Okay. So pretty much based on the numbers from the next school year, cafeteria numbers, I'd like to then come January, review the bidding process again to see if that's something that we can interest in doing.
I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion. I mean, that, that's right. That's probably understood.
Okay.
But that, that's, that doesn't need to be part of the motion really now is just understanding where our food service program is going to be at least for one year. And, and, and then we could, but that's a great discussion point, Amanda. So, and that, that could be something that we could charge the superintendent with in terms of saying that, and we can charge his staff with, to say that as of December or January or whatever date we want to pick, that we'd like to see consideration put in that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Do we get a second on that?
Okay, so Mike made the motion, here, and set with it. Okay, this is just, this is, what are we doing here? We've got a vote, this is a formal vote. Okay, I'm just, we're not taking consensus, we're voting on this. I'm just processing this in my own mind, for rubber tools. So let's, let's do a roll call on this, I guess. Are we ready to, everybody ready to take a vote on this? Okay, Amanda, can I serve you?
Um, no. Wait, wait, then say it from what?
I don't know, I don't know what you want to say. Let's see, that's what.
The motion is, I'll make a motion that to continue using the present cafeteria program for the 2016, 17 school year.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so you're, you're voting yes.
Have yes. Mike?
Yes, yes.
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 And I'm saying yes. Okay. Yes, please.
Yeah, so the cafeteria of those food service workers requested a chance to be given another year. Nobody ever dreamed they were going to end up being given the opportunity to get another year in this way.
That's very true.
But now fortunately, they have the opportunity. As we just heard in this timeline, that, that we're gonna have, and we've got through this process again. We need to start beginning of February. And what drove this whole thing was the subsidy. Concerned that the school system couldn't afford the subsidy. So I think, to Amanda's point, those first numbers, four, five months are really critical. But I think more importantly is after that. And again, I really urge that everything that we look at be a three-year plan. And I would like to make a request for our administration to work with our first, first food service people during that period of time. So when we have to start to look at this, we have to make a decision at the beginning of February on this. When do we need to start considering this? That's what I'm having to remember, since I have my budget, right? But I would like to make a request that the administration work with the food service group, work with a three-year plan.
We need a person.
Right, yeah.
That's our first person. I mean, in all seriousness, I'm not making light of that.
No, I know, right, right. But somehow, or we've got to assume that it's going to continue, it's going to be first, right? To end it up.
Yes.
But it'd be a three-year plan, then I'm not even sure how, but somehow we have to, we have to be comfortable it's going to be realistic. So we don't want to be coming back to this each year. And we can't have a deficit, I think is what everybody's been saying. But we can't be going through this each year for the sake primarily of the employees. So every year, you know, am I going to have my job next year? Am I going to have my job the year? But once we do, we don't have to do it every year.
You, you contract, if you, whatever decisions, it's an annual decision.
I mean, in turn with the employees. I mean, if we keep it in-house. So I'm saying a three-year plan that, that, that shows no deficit. And that people are confident it's a credible plan. I'm not sure how you get there, but I think it was the belief of the food service group that they could accomplish that.
So we would work with the members going to be leading this, because we would charge that person. Administration, us would charge that person to work with the services.
Right. As they're putting it together, everybody believes it's credible, has realistic assumptions, right? Yeah, then, then the sort of. Yep.
Okay, everybody from the board's perspective is set, okay? Yes, Cindy.
Um, hey, I just would like to say publicly that we appreciate the employees who have been at meetings, after meetings. We appreciate your professionalism through all of this and everything. We really appreciate it. The board has expressed this so many times, your dedication this school year, particularly in very, very difficult circumstances, to be there every single day, taking really great care of our kids. And I just want to state it publicly as well.
And so I'll just say the last, I would just say, everybody else can talk if they want, but my grandmother always said, everything happens for a reason, and you never know why. And we always have to take that in heart, and I gotta tell you, I live by my grandmother's words, and I know she watches over me every day.
I live by your grandmother's words.
I know.
She wants to watch it all for us.
Okay, Cindy, thank you for those comments, and I think you should probably have to the board for that. And this is. Yeah, I appreciate that.